Every year, just never took the actual certification, which is good to do, but it is much more fast, you know.
Is there any of the planning sort of maybe?
Yeah.
Two of your A I C P here.
I actually just got it last spring.
Awesome.
Um. Frankly, I was a little surprised that I passed the test. Uh, they don't tell you. It mean it's a lot to know, but also like you only should have 50% pass.
Right.
Which I did not know. Great. Well, that's all right, so.
Awesome.
Oh, wow.
Did they only have to give us notice for it?
There is. That must be one of the ones in the family. You guys always see like just driving over, there's always this little.
Yeah.
Dear family.
Yeah. Pair of male elephants on our neighborhood. The brothers.
Awesome.
There's a lot of them. Street, I have a little short study screen, it'll be right there.
You know, things to walk through our neighborhood pick on as much now that it's built out. Here's one.
Push my edge.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we wanted to start it.
Oh, I did start it.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, I just haven't, I'll end it. You want me to do it then?
That's funny. Oh, that's Giuliano, yeah. All right, we have a call on there. I have a voicemail on there from somebody. Hi, Giuliano. Do I need to press record or is it automatic? Yeah, it's automatic, so we are recording.
So it's 6:32 and we will have a recorder. The planning commission meeting, we're going to say 16th, 2025. Uh, we have Commissioner Pereira joining us by Zoom or. The head of the politics team, okay?
Present.
And we are Commissioner.
Yeah, I can't, I think I cannot hear well. I mean, if you can speak close to the microphone, it will be better.
Where's the microphone?
It's just on that, so everybody just try to speak loud.
Closer.
Or.
All right, we have Commissioner Matlock.
Present.
Commissioner White.
Present.
And I am Commissioner Teal. Um, so we will, um, open a public comment for non-agenda items. At 6:33, I think that we have anybody online?
Nobody else? No.
Okay. And we don't have anybody here for public comments on non-agenda items here. All right, so at 6:33, we were closed for public comment. I move on to item number three, the approval of minutes from March 19th, 2025. Um, are there comments, questions, the commissioners, or a review for a motion to approve?
Motion you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Not opposed, so that carries. And we are on to item number four. The introduction of the design standards amendments for conformance to E S H V 1293. We'll turn over this after.
All right, um, well, welcome, everybody. Um, we have included in the agenda some proposed design standard amendments to both the design guidelines and also the design standards in municipal code section 1834. I do see that the code section for 1834 is not included in the packet, so I'm going to show it on the screen and walk you through those changes, which are much more limited than the changes that are in the design standards and guidelines document. Um, the purpose of the amendments is to conform to E S H V 1293. This is a state law passed in relationship to the Growth Management Act. Um, and it relates to how cities can regulate and design standards and permit processes associated with design standards. Um, we fortunately are in a situation where we do not need to make any changes to our design standard land review process. So the only things that we are proposing are changes to create more clarity and streamline the design standards themselves. Um, so I'm going to show my screen and walk you through the changes that are proposed in the code, and then we can answer any questions you may have. Um, they're much more limited than the design guidelines. Um. So there's three primary sections we're making changes to, uh, 1834. Uh, the first section has to do with applicability exemptions in relation to other codes in effect. Um, we are only proposing one change to the deviation from standard subsection C. Um, we are adding an additional criteria for approving a deviation from our design guidelines. Um, the deviation criteria edition stage deviation is necessary to ensure that the design standards are otherwise applied, as otherwise applied do not violate R C W 36 and V A 630B, which is what E S H V 1293 is about. Um. The next change that's proposed in the code has to do with single-family cottage residential standards as it relates to subsection H on lot layout and design. Um, we are proposing removal of subsection C4, um, which adds regulations about lot width, size, um, lot width and size. Um, the purpose of removing this is just because it's redundant to our bulk and dimensional standards in 1810. So we're not changing the standards. It's already a standard we have in there, it's just redundant to it. Um, the last change within the code that's proposed is regarding multifamily residential, subsection D, building mass and scale. Um, we removed the last sentence from the subsection regarding building height, because again, this is something that's already covered in 1810. Bulk and dimensional standards, it's redundant, it doesn't add anything to the code. And then it creates more problems for staff in the future if we ever change our bulk and dimensional standards. Are there any concerns, questions about the code-related changes that were not included in the packet?
Does you want to summarize just kind of the overall purpose of what the state is trying to do with the design standards?
Sure, so the purpose of the state, uh, sorry, the purpose of E S H V 1293 is essentially to remove barriers and ambiguous architectural design standards that cities apply in projects. Um, we have to be clear and concise in our design standards, and we received some recommendations from our legal team about what those standards may look like, which is what you're seeing in both the, um, design standards and guidelines changes in the packet and also in 1834 tonight.
Did you notice?
That's about it.
And then for the deviation section, you guys understand the broad purpose of what a deviation does or is? It's whenever you're not able to meet a standard. It's a process by which you can kind of apply for staff consideration something alternative to the standards when it meets the criteria. And that's where we've added this standard, it's kind of a catch-all. Should a project run afoul of a certain, a particular standard, create an issue for compliance with these state requirements about design standards, then we can then provide an exception with that deviation process.
They also have to meet all of the criteria for a deviation. It can't just be this addition that they have to meet. It's all four standards that need to meet, so.
Thank you. Um, and I guess I should ask, so deviation is not the same thing as order of adjustments. It's not.
It's a new issue.
Um, one thing that I noted as I was reading this is there's a lot of shoulds and shalls, and I don't know if the other commissioners know this or not, but should is like, it's a good idea, but there's not, it's not required. Shall, you have to.
That was something interesting, I was just watching. Sorry, you're okay.
Yeah, no, you're okay. Um, but just as we're looking at that, that is, that language is specifically for that purpose. Um, I guess I will turn this to the commission so we can talk about it. Um, and for the record, do we need to say our names before we speak? You know, after, I think if we all agree that maybe we're just talking about this and then maybe in the public hearing, but is staff okay with that?
Yeah, next line is just a few minutes tonight.
Okay, perfect. So commissioners, do you have anything that came up on this that you want to discuss?
Perhaps you do want to talk about the should versus shall. I don't understand the purpose of that. Like, how do you weigh whether something that was a should wasn't actually implemented? What's the, what's the boundary between that kind of gray area? Or is it just kind of assumed that we all, we all are reasonable adults?
So should does not give us bones. So a should gives information to the designer, um, but it's not something that we can enforce.
But if we say that the driveway has to be 35 feet wide, then that's it, that's not a should.
Correct.
It shall be.
Yeah.
But there should be landscape, landscape tree that we decided the driveway. That's a, we would like it out, but we can't make it happen.
Right, but either if you wrote in the code, the driveway should be 30 by 30, then that doesn't, that doesn't mean that it has to be.
Right, but if we say shall.
Right.
Then take, take it or rather.
Right. Uh, I was going to ask just on this first, let's see what page this is. Um, page eight. So you have pictures, um, and there's pictures throughout which are really helpful. But just on page eight, it doesn't specify, is this required? Like, is this the age that we want? Is this the scale that we want? I'm just wondering what the purpose is for those pictures. I'm not opposed to them, I'm just, it was confusing to me to know, um, is this just, it should, you know? Or is this, are the requirements tied to the picture?
You're talking about just these introductory photos?
Yeah.
Those are just for the purposes of kind of getting an idea of design standards. There's, there's no standard specific to these images.
So would you say it kind of the aesthetic? I think it should look like this as it fits the character of the city versus, we want to make sure that there is a lamp that is four times taller. I don't know, I mean, I don't know, right? I think I can answer because that's my question too.
Exactly. The other ones have, you know, oh, this is kind of the idea that we're looking at. You know, where there's no, there's no information about these pictures. So it might be helpful to just say, this is, these are the things that we see in our city or these are, because we like our city or, um, just a little bit more information. I think they're not in those words, but.
Continuing, I have, um, on to page nine, some district map. Put them down.
Yes, some of these images are from the original design standards that were approved in 2010. Um, staff are considering some more substantial changes that we will, I, I'm not sure if we've decided if we want to push it through with the hearing next month or if we would like to process it separately.
Yeah, if we can. So we've also sent this to our architectural consultant, or again, from Again, I care architecture. He's going to be providing us with some recommendations to be clarity and purpose. Uh, we don't have those yet, so we couldn't bring those to you tonight, but we'll bring them at your next meeting. Uh, one of the considerations there is to get rid of our downtown core district N B standards and carry those standards into an update for form-based codes. So those standards are all separate. And have two separate documents. The district-wide standards would still apply in downtown commercials, although we wouldn't have downtown commercials district standards in addition to square block standards, which covers the same.
For tying things up.
Um, continuing on to page nine in the neighborhood business, um, section. It says N B is a lower intensity character. What is intensity mean? Is this supposed to be density?
It's a combination of density and use.
Okay.
So not as business oriented, it's, it's more like service and not quite like industrial, but the types of businesses that you don't need a retail core for.
Okay.
Yeah, and it should just go through, um, should go through. There's next station, is there something on that they want to talk about?
Yeah, we're happy to take whatever comments and suggestions that you have tonight because, um, tomorrow, we're going to be providing the updated versions of these, about this and then the topic I'll cover that impact these, um, on the, the website, because the notice appearing goes out on Friday. So if you have direction for us tonight that you'd like to see an amendment to this for the version that goes out to the public, we're happy to incorporate that if we have time to address it.
And I'm down to page 11, that declares one of the western pedestrian street. Actually, it references appendix A, but, uh, at least we, we, oh, did actually map that is, here it says appendix A, it's just labeled appendix.
Yeah.
But then that confusion with this packet, there's an appendix A from, uh, the, impacted, uh, impacted, sorry. Um, so, uh, we could just say at the end of the document. Yeah, we're incorporating this, doesn't it? That can be clarified at least for going out as the packet, you know, to the public.
We can also call it exhibit A and change the name of it.
Yeah.
And. And then I can add a label so that it's ultra clear that it's exhibit A, just not a random exhibit.
On page 14, and I don't think you jump ahead, I mean, I have to move to 14.
Oh, I get everyone on the page. Well, this is just my education. I ran the table on page 12, talking about the base floor area ratio. I don't understand the numbers. I can understand that something's below one, but I didn't understand how something could be higher than one.
So it's a relationship of number of floors to area.
Okay.
So.
Lot area.
Yeah, lot area.
Lot, okay.
And we're actually, one of the things that we're considering to bring to you next meeting is actually getting rid of our F Y R standards because too big. We have not utilized them at all, they haven't something to play with, any designer used. And so we feel like they're adding complexity without adding benefit. If that's the case, we'd rather get rid of this gender that doesn't achieve it.
Yeah, and with our lot coverage standards and previous surface and store water management requirements and building height standards, it's kind of redundant to what farm serves as.
Interesting.
Someone 13?
I didn't leave it on 13. Yes, I'm 14, just because of all the shoulds. I don't have any issues with it right now, but I am still just, you know, turning it over in my mind about the shoulds versus shall kind of thing, but I don't have any issues right now, just know that I'm still processing that, but.
On the shoulds front, so the word should is always bolded throughout, but also shall. Um, but I find that a little bit confusing because when there's a should not, the not is not bolded, I mean, like, people are reading this, so it's not that. I don't think it's that big of a deal, but why is, why is that the, the not? When should nots are there, why is that not bolded as well?
It should be bolded, that makes sense, so if we.
I don't have a specific example, just.
Yeah, I need to go through and update that. Looks like easy, yes.
Do they want to go to 15?
I don't have anything until 18.
Correct, so 18, so.
Okay. All right, so 18.
Okay, um, in improvement standards number two, um, does where mature, healthy forest intervention exists? So who bears the burden of determining what healthy?
That's our risk. So that's a part of the redevelopment application that requires submitting a tree survey.
Okay.
And 18?
I just have a question with this illustration that shows some lane for a bus. It looks like there is a spell over area for the light above the person. I don't know if that's code, something we want, but I mean, it looks reasonable to say light should go to the base of the sidewalk. But I didn't see any mention about it in the text, and if it is there, I just maybe.
That would be addressing for our lighting standards.
Okay, thank you.
Our lighting standards don't necessarily address, um, well, they, they provide minimum foot candles in certain areas and maximum foot candles. Um, they're not necessarily going to be discussing lighting in bus stop in particular, but for site lighting requirements, those are addressing our lighting standards.
Thank you.
Anything for 20?
21. Um, and the, just this section that's crossed out, a little bit percutted, I mean, that sort of thing. So does someone ask for the cover of this already?
The public work standards, yes. Yep, it's redundant to the public work standards, so we are, it's a removal.
That's a lot of what you're seeing in here, is there's other codes that address some of these issues, and we'd rather just keep the right tools in the right toolbox rather than spread it out all over the place.
Thanks, that's what I did after your initial presentation. And then additionally, I guess it's number two, three here, crossed out, I guess the figure to the right, the chunk below requirement, curb cut spacing needs to be, should be.
I think we actually did, it just doesn't show up because it's the formatting.
Yeah, word is a little weird about when you try to, uh, track a change to remove interest. It doesn't show up very well. I think I went through and added a red line through the other portion that we're working through, just to make it accurate.
And finding that maybe that is at least one example that highlighted the shall not, or the not is not.
We see it. Funny, I have the same questions. Um, so is the, I, I know for curiosity, I know it's in another code, but is the required distance between curbs by state or just help of course?
Oh.
There are minimum recommendations that are made by, uh, transportation engineering associations for safety purposes, you don't want too many curbs that's close together.
Right. Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Matlock, do you have any on that page?
No. 122.
Okay, 22.
I, I feel like I'm being an English grammar person, but I don't know that the word is infeasible. Isn't it unfeasible?
Where, yeah?
Number two, under A48, plazas quarter, seniors. Maybe it is infeasible, I wasn't sure, I was going back and forth.
Yeah.
No, he's, it's a really minor thing, you know, English sometimes uses I and sometimes uses you for pronunciation.
Oh, Matt, then, yeah, it looks weird either way.
We can circle that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is that, you know, this is something like, it's just really critical, but I just.
I just checked, infeasible typically implies that a task is impractical or impossible due to inherent constraints. Unfeasible suggests a lack of feasibility, possibly due to current circumstances. So easy.
All right, there it is, so it's unfeasible then.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm not.
No, you are. Um, maybe this is, uh, just the formatting for the PDF, word, PDF conversion, um, you know, that number one, A48 plazas, the sentence runs into the above the figure, show design, and then jumps over to above the figure and includes with.
Yeah, I think with all the letters, we're going to have to.
Oh.
I pre-check at the very end because it's really messy when you're in Word. It bumps things around when you get images.
Yeah, thank you, great thought. I didn't find that, I was looking for this sentence, thank you for correcting. It's just floating out there.
I guess we're onto 23. Same format, I can show you.
So, oh my gosh.
But I mean, it's just, it'll basically know, but it should get cleaned up. I've got 24. 5. 6. 7. Where is your next one?
The next, I don't have anymore.
30, oh, let's see. Oh, just the vegetation, I actually like, you know, the like wall treatments and using vegetation for it, but how do we ensure maintenance? You know, because, because it can, chroma brick, and it can, just depend, you know, when it is, it can.
Yeah, the only thing that we have for as far as maintenance is our, let's say, bond that applies for three years after the completion of the project. After that, it's, the city's not involved anymore.
Okay. So, you know, the, the, I don't know what this is, I'll never say, um, you know, the building itself, the integrity of the building, have anything in our code that would?
We have minimum property maintenance standards.
Okay.
That are addressed to code enforcement if this property is a nuisance, so. It's not generally about, you know, upkeep, it's more about whether it becomes a safety hazard.
Right. I know, and this is like, this is one of those tricky things, because it, it does look nice, but I'm thinking, you know, wax, and there, ice, and there, you know, it is, it is a home for, for some critters as well, and then just the growing on the road, it can, you know, affect the building as well. So I don't have anything to like really change about it, but just a thought that I got into this here. Um, I'll think about it and see if there's something that would like help with that, but I don't know that this is the place for it. Um, and 35?
Yeah, I think 35 is just that, why don't you do this with the commission?
Exactly. We are planning to bring up updated sign regulations into the year's future and to get this in for our state benefits. Um, so our hope is to bring whatever is good out of this and put it into the sign regulations. Have it all in place.
I'm very excited to work on that.
All right.
Actually, I am very excited. That's one that is notorious for you to go to public hearing.
Yeah. We go forward.
Yeah, same, the building height on page 39, that's just relocated. I've got some recording.
A4 plazas, one, that's just, what is this first thing you're referencing? The redevelopment, main event? 600 square foot plaza, shall provide that, I'm not, I mean, I'm at Google. And maps, what is it, does anybody know?
So this is really thinking about the redevelopment eventually of the car dealer. So at some point, have a change into the news. Okay. The interest there is, is to have a true center town gathering.
Okay, all right. Thanks, yeah.
Just like making.
In fact, explain that, because there is no last a year. Nothing's been made. Oh, and then, um, in the same, uh, section, A41, does section A48 of these standards, but it's unclear which, A4, you're referencing under which section?
Because they're primary standards, yeah, okay. The district or the citywide standards.
We can make that clearer, just add some language there.
43.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the, kind of, uh, these maps are kind of useless. You, you know, it's like, without a legend, and there's also, I mean, there's no text really, so, uh, it's hard to read yourself on what you're actually looking, I mean, look at the center, each of these images, expecting to see the interchange is just because. Yourself on what you're actually looking, I mean, I look at the center, each of these images, expecting to see the interchanges just because. Yeah, I don't know if my brain goes to the center of an image when looking at a topic and. They're not working center, so I don't find this particularly helpful.
Also, one forty three, looking at C two one. On service and loading areas shall be located to the rear of the property and away from residential zone area. And I'm not sure if it's always possible to have both.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a good one to add to the extent possible.
Yeah, perfect. One forty four?
Uh, yes. Ah, yes, so C three, uh, one, switch from shall to should. I was curious why that changed.
I have the same question.
C three, number one. I think that idea there is the shall is very difficult. It's not very clear. Create visual interest that, so the whole purpose of what the state's trying to do is to be specific. And if you can't be explicit about how to achieve something, it's hard to make it a shall. So, but that was my edit, that's where I changed shall to should.
That's fair. Because you have visual interest, what does that mean?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, yeah, you know, generally, I have some vague idea what that means to me, of course, so it's different. But I was just wondering if instead of changing shall to should, changing that, if we should change the other portion of the sentence to be more explicit of what. B would want to have done for development in these areas. Instead of leaving it, kind of open to the developer's choice to say, oh, well, they just should, you know, that looks interesting to me.
So the, the one heading is above the A and B. Uh, B is already a should. But you could say shall by meeting the following standards. That's another way to get there.
Are you looking for that change?
How do people feeling, think about it?
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with you, like, it's nice to have some team in this document, because the coworkers, the coworkers have a plan. The coworkers have a plan, feels more like, oh, it's a beautiful world kind of thing. Um, and so I, the more team, better, in my opinion, so I, I understand the change and that makes sense. Because how do you enforce a visual interest, but then, I'm, I'm worried if you want to make it more specific. And, and I think that too, you can think about it too, because it was, then, we're not moving this along too easily yet.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not trying to make it harder on you guys, but just kind of the, this thought is there. Not trying to make it harder, but we're trying to do the right thing.
Okay, that's all. My text is seventy seven, but we can skip it for the sign design.
I remember forty seven as well, so.
Mine, sign design stuff already got it answered.
Or did you have her please?
For example, C dash eleven, about number two with colors. I actually have a question, why creams and lights are not allowed? They are useful for reducing solar.
That is a consideration. So at least when this was originally developed, the intent was to harmonize buildings with the landscape. And especially if you're looking like from above on Mount Side, big white roof, can look very glaring.
Okay.
Uh, but solar creation is another factor that plays into this, so. Kind of have to choose one or the other aesthetics or. But a dark roof also helps heat in winter, so this is kind of what's more important.
Okay, are there any more on this one?
Those are the ones I'm reading.
Right.
About forty nine. Uh, the, this map is just hard to read. So if that could be.
It's weird that you said that, because I was like, wait, we had some beautiful maps coming.
I know, I know.
And I think we probably have the original of this somewhere, we just need to locate it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Or, or seven, probably, and then locate it somewhere. So I was definitely curious, I, I mean, I was curious about the, the class one, class two pedestrian streets, just to see which streets in towns all in each of those categorizations, because I'm curious.
Thank you. Are there any other thoughts? Anything from Commissioner Pereira online that we can, we haven't heard from you, Commissioner Pereira, so we're not trying to exclude you. So if there's anything that you wanted to say about the document, please let us know, and you have the floor.
No, no, I think you addressed everything. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will move on to the next item. I did actually have a question for staff. Um, we don't have minutes, like an approval minutes for the combined city council meeting work study that we just had, is that theirs?
I don't know that there would be minutes from that, because that was training rather than an actual day.
Okay, perfect. So we don't have to worry about it though. So we will move on to item number five. This is an introduction for the intact C amendment to scale the residential unit size for SB fifty two fifty eight.
Yeah, yeah, so this is another one that the state has imposed on us, requirements. Um, I think it's a great idea, it's just the timing is difficult. Um, because it's follows right after a big complement application, also with design standards and critical areas and other things that we have to do. This is one of them that's due before June thirty. And the overall intent of Senate Bill fifty two fifty eight, where the legislatures require us to scale impact fees according to residential building size. Is the housing affordability issue throughout the state. So the state is really trying to make developing housing more affordable, especially for the lower income types of housing. And so one way to achieve that then is to scale your impact fees. So currently, City of Orbin has a single family residential category, a multifamily residential category, cottage category. There's a few more than that, but they're distinct or discrete categories. So it doesn't matter if you have a one thousand square foot house or a four thousand square foot house, you're paying the same amount. And the idea of the state is, if you've got a bigger, um, dwelling, you should pay more. Because it's possible that you're creating more impact with your residents. So that's the, the overall purpose of what the legislature is trying to achieve there. So we then are obligated to amend our standards to comply with that. There's three ways that you can do that. You can do it based on building size, just a pure square footage basis. You can do it based on number of bedrooms, or you can do it based on traffic generated from the specific use. So we've hired a consultant, SCS Group, we actually got a grant from the state to do that. And SCS Group is a consultant that frequently addresses impact fee issues. So they reviewed the alternative methods and provided recommendations to the city. And they've recommended us to use the square footage basis, because it's the simplest and, and most uniform basis to apply impact fees. So number of bedrooms, there's often questions about what is a bedroom, is this a den, or is this a bedroom, is this an office? What if I get rid of the closet, it's no longer a bedroom? So rather than play that game, a square footage basis is just uniform. Um, likewise, the traffic count basis is very complicated, because that can vary based on the type of the project and its location. Um, so rather than getting into traffic analyses for each and every project, for the purpose of impact fees, we're just going with square footage. So SCS prepared a memo, and that's at the back of your packet, and that looks at what would be the cost per square foot. To apply for our transportation impact fees, our parking pack fees, and our pedestrian bicycle mitigation fees, which is within a chapter called Methods to mitigate developing impacts. And based on that, we have specific figures on a per square foot basis for those impacts. And we've amended our codes now to wrap those per square foot bases into our bill regulations. So we've got, um, I want to run through some of these things, get direction from you guys tonight to provide into the draft that's going out to the public by Friday. Uh, so one of the key questions is currently we exempt accessory dwellings from the impact fees. We haven't formally done that with the transportation impact, impact fees by code, but we've done that by practice for consistency with the others. I want to know, do you guys think that's a good idea to continue to exempt ADUs, or should we be dealing charging for ADUs? So we took this initially to the Community and Economic Development Council Committee, and the direction from the council committee, the three members, the base of council. On the committee was to continue to exempt ADUs. Their, their rationale was ADUs are a great way to promote housing affordability and also housing diversity. For families as change through the course of their family lives. Kids, mom from college, uh, you know, adult, family members, or grandparents, et cetera. That are transitioning out of previous housing into something smaller, gives it a lot of flexibility. And exempting ADUs is a great way to promote ADUs. The converse of that is ADUs still create impact, and with the new ADU standards that we've adopted. Each single family home can do up to two ADUs, and those can now be up to a thousand square feet, which is bigger than eight hundred square foot before. So it's more potential impact. So it's a trade off. Are we collecting revenue from that, or extend those to provide improvements to maintain our level of service? Or are we exempting them to promote housing affordability? So that's a question I'm looking for direction from you guys on, if you have any direction on that. Another one is residential additions. So the way that we have our impact fees currently is it's just based on new uses. So if you have a new house, you play pain impact. With a square footage basis, we can begin charging for additions, and we've provided a draft in here of over six hundred square feet. Six hundred square feet is the basis on which one resident is presumed to utilize. So one resident of impact with six hundred square feet therefore could be charged impact fees. That's the same question. Um, this is a potential source of revenue to offset impacts, but at the same time, it adds complexity. Um, in that we suddenly have to track additions as well as just new units. My, I guess, recommendation from administering a lot of this is I would prefer to exempt, um, addition, particularly with the complexity issue. And I also don't think that we'd be collecting a lot of revenue, because the number of home additions is very small in relation to the number of new units in that process. Uh, but that's a question to you guys. And then another question is just the level of credits that we provide. So right now, in our parking pack fees, we provide, um, an exemption for moderate income housing. Moderate income was a problem, because the way that moderate income was defined in there was very broad. And it could actually include a lot of market rate housing. I don't think that was the original intent. Uh, part of that is a relation, or the, the reality of our area median income, based on median, as a mean. Is very high, because we have a lot of outliers, a lot of very expensive mansions throughout King County that skew that median higher. So an alternative, or what we've done in the draft regulations is to exempt from our parking pack fees, low income housing. Low income being more specific definition, the lower ends of things, and I've not used the moderate definition that we previously used. However, that leaves a little bit of a hole for projects that don't quite achieve that lower income, so. Do you have direction, if you feel like we should apply a discount for moderate income, we need to come up with a definition for that. That's different from the definition we've used in the past, which is probably. Um, a few specific things within the, the draft in the parking pack fees. Um, like I mentioned, that the affordable housing definition, we've now gotten rid of, applied the low income housing definition from the state. Um, code of addressing impact fees. Um, in square footage for how to calculate this, we're excluding non-residential, uh, or non-habitable areas such as garages and basements, hall. And within multifamily, common areas like hallways or recreation rooms that are not specifically to the dwelling. Uh, other things. Added a credit section to the parking pack fee regulations to be consistent with what we apply already in our transportation impact fees. So when a developer constructs something from the park capital facilities, when as a part of the project. They should get credit against their traffic or their parking back fees. We haven't had that codified today, but what we, what we hear is carry forward the same language that we have from our transportation impact fees. So that park improvements can be credited for it. Oh, let's see. That's probably enough. So I'm looking for feedback on those key questions for you guys, but I want to stop talking, I've talked enough. And, uh, address questions that you guys have.
Thank you. Um, what gets it first, we can talk about the charge for the ADU and should it be exempted? How, how does Commissioner feel about it?
I understand the, the rationale behind it, and it makes sense that we want to support lower cost housing types. Uh, so you can reduce that impact fee, it does lower the cost of that housing, it's more affordable. And given that we don't, I, I think based on, we've had previous discussions, we're not seeing a word in those ADUs can be. The overall, it's going to be, so I'm worried.
Commissioner, I guess.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I felt the same way when I was looking at exemptions, I specifically was like, were they to use? Uh, these should be in here, and they were, so I, I, I feel the same way.
Uh, Commissioner Pereira, did you have anything for this question, for the charge of, uh, charge for ADUs?
No, no question.
Um, I mean, I think I agree, I find them being exempt, I would say probably exempt unless they were sold. That would be the, because then it's a completely different ownership, and that feels different. And so if it's a different ownership, I don't know if there's a way to write that into the code and to allow.
That is really complicated, because we're not involved in point of sale, we're just involved in development review.
So when, so if you, let me think, okay, so if it's on a parcel, when you sell it, it's condominium then, right? So it does, does it have its own parcel, or does it have a separate parcel?
No, it does not.
And that's where, like, yeah, I'm, all we're not charging for them and, you know, allowing development. But that's where it feels sticky, is because we can sell them.
Yeah, if you're creating a new ADU for the purpose of sale, that would be easier to address, because we can address that through the condominium process.
Right.
But after that fact, if somebody else sells it.
Right.
Or sells an ADU of those previously created, would have any basis for.
So maybe, I guess, for my perspective, that would, you know, it wouldn't put it in like that, if you're creating a new one for the purpose of sale. Then it's a piece of, yeah, you're right, otherwise it'd be so hard to enforce that. And I don't know, what does Commissioner feel about that?
One thing, if there's an existing ADU, who sells it? I don't know if the impact actually changes, because, you know, changing the size of the ADU, so it still is, still only housing the same number of people. So that doesn't change, so I'm not sure that sale ADU, things have had any noticeable change to traffic or, yeah, u- usage of the area. So I don't know, you know, that one seems a little bit like double jeopardy, you know, where in impact, you would be getting charged multiple times for the same footprints. Uh, despite the fact that. despite the fact that it was paid at some point, still houses the same. It still has the same square footage.
Right. Probably, and I guess that's where like I'm thinking of new properties, right? If somebody's creating an ADU and it's a new family coming in, then that, you know, if we're already, if we're doing impact fees on residential, then just because it's on the same lot as another residential, like that doesn't seem there either. It doesn't seem equitable. So that's, that's my hang-up. But yeah, I agree, if it's existing, you people are already in it, then yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to get consensus about much of what you at least on this.
Right. Commissioner Matt Love, how do you feel?
I guess I'm ignorant here. So the impact fee in my mind is something that gets applied at the time of construction. You know, somewhere I built it. Once it's built out, then it's as-is. So I don't, I guess I'm not grasping the argument that after the building is complete and it's on a new phase of being done, what is the impact now and can we charge again for it? Is that what you're saying? Do I really understand you?
Right, so, so my thought was, okay, if it's a new family coming in and it's a new development kind of thing, it's a new, basically a new home, really, then why are we charging impact fees for new residential over not charging impact fees for a new ADU?
Oh, right, okay, thank you. I appreciate your clarification.
And so that's where I was like, well, maybe if it's sold, then that's, you know, a new family unit kind of thing. It's not just a mother-in-law, it's, you know, it's something different, it's a different family. But, but that gets tricky because it's not a different parcel.
It's not a different parcel, but we, we would have to trigger because to create a four-single ADU, you would have to condominiumize it. And that's the point at which we could then apply the collection.
So I can see that, that being said, because then it's becoming an income property versus a long-lived for family, whatever you say it's going to be. Because the goal is to say, we want a reduction in the overall cost of housing for people. And this is the way to do it, to get more income housing, lower income housing in here. But then it becomes a sale that it's not the same purpose. So I can see, like you said, it becomes a condominium, triggering some kind of review. So now that I understand, I can really, it's the clarification that I'm. So would that be the same for the building addition then? Because exempted now because it's timeless, that would, the house is sold with market size to be.
There wouldn't be a trigger in that case.
Okay. And I think we'll, let's check Commissioner Pereira's on.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good. That, that, you know, the thread is there.
Yeah, my expressions are.
No, that's perfect. We just have to answer this question first, I think. So Commissioner Pereira, where are you for the charging for ADUs? Do you feel they should be exempted? Do you feel there should be a charge for condominiums? Where are you at with this?
Well, if I understand well, because the sound is pretty bad for me here, I, I agree with what, like, I think, I agree with this impact fee should like for, should be like, reduce it for smaller housing units. I agree with that.
I don't think I quite understood.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, but I just didn't quite understand what you said. Can you say it one more time?
I, I agree with these changes that they are proposing to reduce the fee for, impact fees for smaller housing units. I, I, I think that, that, that should be this one.
So for the ADUs though, do you hear our discussion about exempting them for new ADUs? Or, you know, if a new ADU for the purpose of sale, like a condominium? Or do you think all ADUs should be exempt regardless of new or existing?
I think all ADUs.
Okay, so we are kind of split, I think. So that doesn't help you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, um, maybe I will write it as you have suggested, and then we'll come back to the next meeting where you could see that language and then make a recommendation of that language.
Okay. But you can also see what legal and commerce has to say about that kind of an approach. Yeah. Perfect. Yeah, luckily, we don't have to pass it on today, so we're still discussing. Okay, so now we need to talk about the residential additions charge. Do we believe that additions should be charged impact fees?
Is there a way to game the system? Is there a way for someone to put an addition on that they call, when they get permitting, it's a garage, and then they utilize it not as a garage? And so they've avoided paying impact fees for an addition?
No, because if they have to do an addition, it requires a building permit. We review that building permit to determine what it is. So the proposal as written is even over 600 square feet could trigger impact fees. But that's, again, from my perspective, that's a lot more process for staff to administer without a lot of corresponding benefit because of the small number of additions that we would process. But it means that every time an addition comes in, we'd have to consider how big is it? Do we need to charge impact fees?
I have a question. Is there a certain number of years that are associated with additions? So if I build a 600-square-foot addition, and the following year I do another 600-square-foot addition under a separate permit, does it, I mean, I'm sorry, 300 and let's say 400, does it stack in that?
It does in these regulations. We do that with our flood regulations. But again, that adds another layer of tracking that makes permit review more complex.
So the cost were to do them separately but could have avoided, then it actually, which it might not even as well to go that way. Yeah, all right, just curious. Commissioner Matt Love, you were on this third before.
I'm still mixed. I understand the purpose of impact fees, it's offset the effect of a new building on the city as a whole, the environment and so on. Yet it feels really complex to do that for something so small as an addition.
We also checked with other agencies. It's, we checked with a number of local jurisdictions, district courts, my county. I don't remember the whole list. And also the Department of Commerce. Couldn't find anybody that is charging for or plans to charge for additions.
Yeah, from my perspective, I don't want a resident to feel like they're being penalized to improve their property. So from my perspective, I wouldn't want to charge for an addition because it's still same family, you know, that they're just, you know, if someone has a really small house and they just feel like they need, you know, another living room for their family, that doesn't feel like it necessarily should trigger impact fees from my point of view. I can see a lot of people doing some illegal ones if, if they were forced to pay impact fees. So I, my personal opinion is to not charge for additions.
I agree, I agree with you, Hannah.
Yeah, I was thinking too that with the building going on now, the lots are much smaller. It's not really going to affect a lot of people, the older homes. Doesn't seem to be a, same thing with the ADU, it doesn't seem to be a big impact. It's providing better living space for people. I'm, I'm okay with not charging impact fee.
Okay.
Okay, you won.
All right, we have a contest here.
All right, so the third one was the level of credit. Do we want to have an exemption for low-income housing or a new definition for the moderate housing?
I read through that manual that currently stands talking about that. And I, I would like to explore, we define what we mean by moderate as what we want to do, figure out a way to explain that.
So you would like to see a new definition?
Yeah, something that is tighter, more rigorous, and less able to be gained. I don't want buildings not to gain like profit, but the goal for affordable housing is to build affordable housing. So I could see that pushed.
Commissioner, right, do you?
I would say probably a couple of seconds.
Commissioner Pereira, how do you feel about this question about the level of credits?
Can you repeat the question because I didn't understand?
So, and Sam might be able to explain better, but the, there's a certain level of credits that you need for an exemption for impact fees for a moderate or low-income housing. So right now it's moderate-income housing, but the definition doesn't quite fit the standards by the state. So we can relook at the definition of moderate housing or just switch it to low-income housing.
The question is whether or not we would provide a partial credit for a new definition that we come up with that isn't low-income housing, but somewhat above that, but still tighter than what the current definition for moderate income was, which was problematic because it was too broad. So based on the state's recommendation or the state's definition of, of low-income housing, we've applied that discount, but we're not applying the same discount that we previously did with the previous parking pack fee regulations. And the question is, do we offer something in between?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would agree. Look at a new definition and see if that can help us fit in.
Yeah, so we'll try and come up with something that back then.
Okay, so we gave you two out of three.
Working, I mean, can the definition of low-income housing be expanded?
No, because if that's a specific state definition.
Right.
But we can come up with our own additional definition. And we just want to make sure that that definition correlates to other principles about affordable housing. So we're not creating problems then with definitions or other definitions that differ.
Perfect, thank you. We can go through page by page. I actually really liked your comments on this. I feel you explained pretty well about, you know, each thing that you changed. That was helpful. Does the commission want to go through page by page or do you have anything that you want to address?
I just had one question that might not be true name. But when talking about fee changes and income, does the city see this as a significant change in the overall impact fee account?
Very good question, huh?
How big is that?
Yeah. That's a key question that the council's going to be asking us is what's the financial picture of this? So it will change because what we're doing here is we're making big houses more expensive and little houses less expensive. So how that then affects the income situation is what does our future buildup going to look like? And the truth is, yes, we have fewer subdivisions where we're going to see big houses because that's simply filled up. We don't have very many spaces left for big LDR subdivisions anymore. We're going to see more infill and generally more multifamily because of the nature available then for those uses. So we'll see smaller units and correspondingly, we'll see potentially less revenue from those smaller units because of this. However, that's made up a little bit by the increased cost of the larger units. So that's the idea of revenue neutrality. And FCS picked an median size of home of 2,600 square feet in this. That was kind of the benchmark. So that below that, we're lowering impact fees, above that, we're raising impact fees in the hopes of that idea of revenue neutrality. But that's going to depend on what actually gets submitted for development. And that's where we don't have the perfect crystal ball.
Those impact fees get put into some kind of account.
Yeah.
Over time is used to offset impacts. Do you think about this increment coming in? Does the city see a point where the, the impact fee amount no longer is meaningful? And then you have to find another source of revenue, but that is to be used for?
Uh, we, yeah, that's the, the whole idea of kind of adapt and adjust.
Okay.
Go. So we can always come back and reconsider our impact fees if they're insufficient. We rely on, impact fees are just one source of revenue to fund our capital improvement plan. We go after a lot of grants, after state, local.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sometimes I just don't know, so I don't need to ask those questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts on this?
I, I think I only had one, like, big question available, just sort of minor potential edits. But page 59, at the top, 17.36080, fee collections. At the time of application for development, permanent parking pack fee shall be. And how long is anticipated that this document exists? And this D will be, is there any provision to increase this as time goes on?
Yeah, that's under B, 7036080B, inflationary adjustment each year. So we have our taxes, rates, and D schedule. And this amount is just the amount at the time of adoption. And then each year we update it based on CPI.
Do you want to go through the edits that you were looking at as well?
Sure. 58, 17.36055, credits, A. These will be awarded to him slash her. I'm just suggesting change it to them. Same or later on, I think, is her, don't you just change it to them? Do you want to go page?
Commissioner Matt Love, did you have anything in the document? Okay, so I, let's go through it.
All right, go quick because it's just, page 59 in the table. On the left column, it says motel, motel per guest room. On the right side, it had in front of the seats, per guest room. It's redundant. So it's a D, it's whatever, it doesn't get in on the left side of the table.
Okay.
Page 64, I think that number gets on the left. Yes, it goes 23. Okay, thank you guys. And then at number 12 on that same page, it says considered to rate a blank to, and we have to see each other, so it's just a syntax.
Which, which one are you on?
Number 12, still on page 50, I'm sorry, 64, page 64, so.
Okay. Considered to rate. Oh, thank you.
And that's a rating.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Pereira, did you have anything else with this document?
No. No, I'm good.
Yeah, and on that number 12, I just want to provide a clarification. So we were talking a lot about these deductions for affordable housing projects in the parking pack fees. The recommendation from our public works director is to not apply that same credit for transportation impact fees. The recommendation from our public works director is to not apply that same credit for transportation impact fees. Parking pack fees are a little bit more of the frosting on the cake as far as benefit to the city and if you don't get it, it's not a huge deal. Transportation impact fees are generally a little bit higher level of importance because if you don't get those and you're not then funding improvements to keep up with your levels of service standard, that affects this whole city's gridlock having problems. So because of that, his recommendation is that we consider those deductions through a development agreement, which provides a little bit higher level of control considering the particulars of the project rather than just a blanket exemption.
I feel like that's a good use for a development agreement, too. Some development groups, I don't know, but that feels appropriate. All right. Commissioner Matt Love, did you have anything else for this?
No, I have my questions answered, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Well, I think, unless that has any more questions for us on that one. Okay. Then I think we can move to item six and then turn to seven forty-one.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got us.
That's all we got.
We expect a full report, what are your opinions at the meeting at the next meeting?
Well, thank you very much, Giuliano.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too, bye.